No, no, four hundred.
So, the argument is, is town...
You ready? We have a quorum. You want to sit down?
Because the state caps themselves.
No, do you need a minute? Do you need your...
No, no, I'm good. Let's, let's, yeah, let's light this candle.
I don't know where anyone else is. Ready? All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a few moments tonight to have a moment of silence in recognition of those and veterans who have passed. We have two condolences to read tonight, and our condolences go out to the family of Alden G. Anderson upon his passing on January 23rd, 2020. Mr. Anderson served in Squadron One of the 26th, 21st Army Air Force Base Unit in Barksdale, Louisiana during World War II. He was a member of the Greatest Generation who answered the call of duty without hesitation. The second one I'd like to read is condolences go out to the family of Calvin C. Hanson upon his passing on January 29th, 2020. Mr. Hanson served in D-Battery 15th Triple-A Battalion, 31st Regimental Combat Team, 7th Infantry Division, the 8th United States Army during the Battle of Chosun Reservoir in Korea. He was captured by the Republic of China forces, resulting in his captivity as a prisoner of war from December 2nd, 1950 through August 17th, 1953. He received the Bronze Star for Valor and the Purple Heart for Wounds Sustained in Combat. We please have a moment of silence in recognition of these people. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Counselor, Mr. Rushton will not be with us this evening, so we will proceed. I have a couple of announcements, oh, the vote for the minutes of our previous meeting on January 21st. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion on the minutes from January 21st? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, announcements from the President. I have two announcements this evening. The first is that we will have our annual State of the Town address on March 24th, 2020. It's a regular council meeting night, however, the State of the Town address will be an hour before the council meeting at 6:30 PM. So I'll be working with the town managers, putting together some of the things that have been going on these past year or so. So certainly put the word out to the town employees and we'll invite some people to come in that night to listen. Also, I wanted to go over the Charter Review Committee that I called for last meeting. I'm looking for volunteers to serve on the committee. If people would submit their letters of interest to serve on the committee to our council clerk, and I will go over those names with my colleagues here and make an appointment. Hopefully, we'll have the committee appointed by the town election or right around, sometime in April. So if I could ask everyone to submit their names, the order that was approved by the council in December of 2013 that establishes the Charter Review Committee calls for a seven-member committee. And obviously, no person who was a town employee, elected town officer, or finance committee member can be on the committee, so we're looking for volunteers. Mr. Columbotus?
For clarification, Mr. President, will that be a standing committee or will there be a finite period of where they'll be serving? That might be useful to people who aren't sure what kind of commitment they can give.
Well, probably, yeah, I agree. It should be one year. When we established the first charter committee, we were given the charge of one year and to report back to the council. We formed in April of 2014, and we reported to the council April of 2015, so we had one year to do the work, and I would assume I would be, why not give them the same amount of time, I guess, you know? But we can probably discuss that when we get the names, but I guess, we should give them a finite amount of time and establish some criteria, too.
Yeah, they wouldn't be signing their life away to town service.
And I've asked the town manager to include in the budget a little line item for secretarial support, because we certainly did need that when we went through it first time. Proclamations, I do not have any proclamations this evening. Citizens' open forum, are there any citizens here that wish to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of the meeting? Just please come up to the podium and just address the council.
Good evening, counselors. Ed Ivaldi, 10 Boxwood Lane. Just first want to thank you for your service to the town and to your families who are making a sacrifice consistently for you being absent from the homes. Thank you for that. I'm here tonight to raise a public safety concern that relates to speeding traffic on a heavily-traveled residential street in Bridgewater, and that street is Vernon Street, a narrow two-lane road that stretches from 104 basically down to Middleborough. I'm focusing tonight on a one-mile section between the entrance of 104 on Vernon to Forest Avenue. I walk my dog frequently on Vernon Street between the two entrances to Boxwood Lane, and even though I'm on a sidewalk, I literally at times fear for my life. The posted speed limit for this two-lane street is 30 miles an hour, but I can assure you that most vehicles I see are easily doing 40, 50, and sometimes even higher, especially during commuting hours. What is unique about Vernon Street is that it's a major cut-through for commuters coming from Middleborough, Rainham, and southeastern sections of Bridgewater, mostly all heading to Route 24. I'm not aware of any major incidents or fatalities in recent years along this road, but I believe it could happen at any time, especially with residents now being out and about more with the mild temperatures this winter. Being proactive before someone actually suffers an accident, I believe, is the smart approach to take. We have an opportunity and responsibility as a town to remind drivers of the posted speed limits. Unfortunately, the current posted signs are not working, nor do I believe that our police department has the time or the resources to conduct monitoring on a regular basis. Therefore, I'm suggesting that the town look into using radar speed signs along this one-to-two-mile stretch of Vernon Street. Radar speed signs, also known as driver feedback signs, are traffic calming devices designed to slow speeders down by alerting them of their speed. They're being used across the country, around the world, because they're effective at slowing speeding drivers down. Tests repeatedly show that speeders will slow down up to 80% of the time when they're alerted by a radar sign. Typical average speed reductions are around 10% to 20%, and overall compliance with the posted speed limit will improve by 30% to 60%. Studies have also proven that slowing traffic down will greatly reduce the chances of fatal accidents involving pedestrians and automobiles. An interesting fact, a pedestrian hit by a 40-mile-an-hour vehicle has a 90% fatality rate, whereas if the car is only going 20 miles an hour, the fatality rate decreases to only 10%. Radar speed signs are particularly effective at getting the superspeeders, people driving 20 miles an hour or more over this posted speed limit to slow down. I know that other towns such as East Bridgewater and Hanson use these effectively along several of their busy residential streets to remind drivers to slow down. What I found in doing some preliminary research is that the average cost of these solar-powered, pole-mounted devices would be in the $2,500 to $3,000 range. There's a lot of data available to help us determine the quantity and placement of these devices, but if we make an investment of, say, $10,000 to $20,000, which would buy, you know, say, five to 10 of these devices, we could be, they could implement these, would be worth the potential safety improvements that would result. As for funding, perhaps one option might be to use some of the resources generated from the medical marijuana host agreements. I don't know how much is available, but that might be one option. Another option might be to get some sort of a grant from the state or from the federal government to help with this. The truth is that all of us have driven over the speed limit at one time or another, not because we purposely try to break the law, but because we get distracted or simply forget to pay attention. In today's hectic world, wouldn't it be great if we could help drivers pay better attention by reminding them of how fast they're really going? I ask that you please consider this or any other solutions that would help make this section of Vernon Street and perhaps maybe other streets in Bridgewater a little bit safer. And I'd like to add that I'd be willing to help do the more research on this and help get this implemented if that's something that you all want to do. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of our meeting? Anybody? Seeing none, I'll move on to Item E, Appointments. Library Board of Trustees, we have a Barrel Domingo.
Mr. President, Barrel Domingo, as you know, has been recommended by the current trustees of the library. Under your town charter, the elected position can be filled by the sitting trustees, but does have to be approved by the town council. So they have put forward Barrel Domingo as the person to fill the vacant seat on the library for the balance of the term and ask for your approval of that appointment.
I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second to appoint. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much. Stepping up to the plate, appointment to the county council vacancy, District 6, under Item B. The town council must vote their intentions to fill the vacancy. Input commentary from the public will be allowed prior to the interested citizens listed below. Being given the opportunity to answer questions by counselors, a vote to appoint for the remainder of the vacant term may be taken at the conclusion of the process. Interested citizens from District 6 who have submitted their names are William Atkins, Mark Lindy, Jason Santoro. And since our last meeting, I've had some correspondence and conversations with the town attorney and regarding the process. After we discussed some things that I was happy with or wasn't happy with, anyway, he wrote out the memo that's in your packet, which I'm comfortable with what his recommendation is to do. And it says, "Following is the legal protocol in which the town council is recommended to follow in filling the current district council vacancy. This protocol falls in line with the language of the charter as well as a subsequent ordinance intended on addressing the issue." Eligibility, registered voter of the town, resident of such district where there is a vacancy. So step one is the council shall first vote as to whether or not they wish to fill the vacancy. And it requires a majority out loud during an open public meeting. According to Section 2-5(c) of the Charter, gives the town council the authority to fill a vacancy if Section A and B is unavailable. Accordingly, the council must first vote if it will fill the vacancy under those circumstances. So I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion to what? To fill?
To fill.
There's a motion to fill and there's a second. Any discussion? Mr. Columbotus?
Maybe I'm jumping ahead, but if we vote now to fill the vacancy, it seems like we could only undertake next step four after having completed step one. We've already done step four without...
That's right. If we, if we vote to fill the vacant, if we vote to fill the vacancy, we would go right to step five, six, I mean.
Well, then, I, no, I'd echo what Mr. Columbotus said. If we start at step one, we have to go through step two, three, four, five again.
No. My understanding is, no, I've clarified, I've asked the town council that. You can clarify tonight that...
Yeah, that would be great, because that's how I do things, step one, two, three, four, five.
Understood. So what I had actually, my response to the council clerk, she had inquired of this, was that technically speaking, I believe there should be a first reading as it relates to step one, and then there should be a vote at a second reading. I was unclear because I just didn't remember if you all had done a first reading. I know there were several discussions about having this happen, but that was my advice at the time. So I was leaving it within your kind of deference as to whether or not there had technically been a first reading on this, because I guess it had been advertised and it had been addressed at prior meetings, but I don't recall there being an official first reading of an order to appoint, so I was leaving it within your purview.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Mr. Rollins, given that you've laid out steps one through seven, and you don't know whether step one happened, and if we appoint someone tonight, there'll be at least two people who are not happy that they didn't get appointed. Do we, do we put the town at risk of being sued by the unsuccessful candidates because we didn't follow the process that you outlined here?
Well, first of all, you know I'm going to say, there's always possibility the town can get sued for anything, right? So, but, but be that as it may, my preference would be that there be a first reading of an order to appoint, and then there be a vote on the order, whether or not you refer that out or you keep it at council level. That would be my preference as to step one, if you want to know my preference. The charter is very vague about this entire process, which leaves some ability for you all to use your discretion as to whether or not you think you need to go through that type of formality relative to step one. So I think it would be, anyone contesting it would have an extremely difficult time pointing to some specific fact that would serve to show that you had to go through as an order, but the way the parliamentary procedure process typically works is you all have, you make votes on orders, right? And so the first order in my mind is to make the order that you wish to fill the vacancy. And that is how I envisioned the protocol. But certainly, there's some amount of deference in this process because of how vague the charter is written.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
It would be extremely hard to find something except this document that says what your legal recommendation is to us.
Right. Correct. Correct. Yeah, I mean, that's why I said it's...
You're putting, you put us in a hard position there by...
Well, it's my preference.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm just saying, you know...
Well, sometimes you all listen to my advice and sometimes you don't, so I'm giving you my preference.
Just like when you played ball for me. Okay, thank you.
So this process that we have laid out is, is just a recommendation.
That's right.
So the question that we could, if we choose to reject it and not, and go to step four before having completed step one, that's what we have, you're saying we have a certain amount of discretion?
You, you do it with the notion that that doesn't fall in line with my interpretation of the protocol that should be followed under the charter, but you also do it with the cover that the charter is incredibly, incredibly vague on this whole procedure. So this is my interpretation as to what I believe the charter allows for you to do. The parliamentary procedure part of this process, which is step one, allows you to make an order. The reason I made step one a separate and distinct action is because this council only acts by order under parliamentary procedure, order, measure, resolution, ordinance, right?
Not by uniform consent.
Exactly.
Which is essentially what we had in deciding we want to fill this.
That's right. So, so that is why I did it that way, because I think what I recommend as a first reading of an order fits within the parliamentary procedure process. Now, is that notion laid out in the charter? Absolutely not, which is why I think there's some level of discretion. Is it my preference? No, it is not. But I, again, you all get to make your own decisions. I've written out a protocol, and that's, that's what I recommend.
But I'd just like to point out that the cost of being extra careful and laying and being very deliberate with the process is waiting another, I don't know, two weeks? How long?
We have a three-week break from today.
Right, so we're already, we're getting into mid-February for a term that will last mid-February, mid-March, two months, right? I just, I, I'm loathe to wait another two weeks when you're only going to have two weeks, two months, so...
The sticking point that I had with Attorney Rollins was, was, was step one. And because the charter, in my opinion, is very clear that says the council shall. Now, the interpretation of shall was, was, was termed to me that it doesn't mean you have to.
Well...
So I'm like, okay, I've never heard that one before, but I'll go with it. So, but the charter is very clear that the council shall. The council, the charter does not say we need to take a vote to do that, but I, I respect and will follow step one, because if we didn't have to follow step one, we have done step two, three, and four already. We have done it. No, it was not done in the form of an order. Even tonight is not in the form of an order. As a matter of fact, we just appointed a library trustee that was not in the form of an order, but we took action.
It's a different, but it's a different, it's a different process, right? So the appointment of a library trustee is not something that falls within your purview as to whether or not you appoint, you decide if you're going to appoint a library trustee. That's the town manager's purview under the charter. He brings it before you and you all make the appointment. What I'm telling you is, based on how the charter is currently written, the shall is not saying you shall fill it, meaning you must fill it. What it's saying is, if it's going to be filled, it shall be filled, or it will be filled by you all, right? And so, like I said, it's incredibly vague, right? And it's incredibly difficult to interpret, and I have had this discussion in open meeting with the council for many years, right? And it's something I would love to see clarified, but in my mind, the best way to reconcile it is that you all have that authority to make the decision if you're going to fill it. And I think if you read into what it says, that makes a lot of sense, because if there's one meeting left, you're not going to fill the seat maybe, right? Or you make that decision. Maybe you are going to fill the seat. Maybe there's something really important coming up. But I think the discretion was built into the charter in that way. So I don't think it says that the town council must, under no uncertain terms, fill a seat that doesn't fit within proviso A and B, right? And A and B is like if there's someone that was next in line that received 30% of the district vote, yada, yada, yada. We could go on, but you're clearly in Section 2-5(c), which is this vague area, which I made sure you weren't in 2-5A and B, by the way, with the town clerk, so. So the best way for this body to make determinations or decisions on things is through the parliamentary procedure process, which you all have to follow under your own code. And so the way I looked at it is, if there's a, something built in here that gives you discretion to make a decision prior to that appointment, that it should be in the form of an order, that order then goes into place, and then you make the appointment. But that, you know, minds can differ, of course.
It's just that, you know, the first meeting in January is when I made the intention known that, you know, we're going to seek, seek letters of interest. And I was, I said that based on, on how we filled the most recent vacancy when Dr. Kevin Perry resigned and we appointed Counselor Chase. I said, "I'm going to follow that same procedure," and I referred to the, the order that Counselor Fitzgibbons put forth even before that. So I said, "I'll follow that process," which is what I did.
Right.
And then, so that was done the first meeting in January. We needed to allow the 21 days. We couldn't do anything at our second meeting in January, and something happened between the second meeting in January and tonight where, you know, we have to, we have to vote.
Well, I was, I was asked to specifically opine on it, which I hadn't been before, and so once I'm asked to provide you all with legal advice, I, I do that, right?
This is the fourth vacancy since this form of government has taken place, and each time that it has come up before the council, no matter what the makeup was, we've had these, you know, wishy, wishy-washy type, you know, I don't know, whatever, you know, clarifications that we've needed from you, which is great.
This is very clear. I mean, this, this one I tried to make very clear.
If we follow this, then perhaps when the Charter Review Committee gets going, and we can send this to them and make it clearer. Counselor Loesch?
We, in the charter updates that we did five years ago that did not pass in the town, there was more clarification there. So the reason it's been wishy-washy is because it's been firing a charter that's been vague. So going back and forth on the various ways of done it, we're still looking at the same charter that was written years ago, so that is, will never change. So I moved to, I moved the question.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to appoint and there's a second.
Is there a motion to move the question?
Some motion to move the question.
Okay, all those in favor moving the question? Aye.
Aye.
There's one no, six two, one. So, under the main motion to appoint, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
No.
No.
Opposed?
No.
Can I ask for a roll call vote? Counselor, uh, clerk? Counsel clerk?
I just got a promotion.
Counsel clerk.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
No.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
No.
Five in favor, two against.
So the motion carries, so we now can move, move on to step two, or is your opinion that we should wait the two weeks again? I mean, we didn't clarify that, clear that up.
Well, my, my opinion was that it should have been...
We don't have an order. We still don't have an order technically in front of us.
Right, it should, it should have been a first reading, right? Is the, is the first step, but you all voted to appoint, so I suppose at this point...
We can move forward.
We can move forward.
Okay. So we have three citizens that have put their names forward. We have, in your packet, there's a Mr. William Atkins, Mark Lindy, and Jason Santoro. Just because they're in that order on the agenda, I will do it in order in which they are here.
President?
But first of all, we have to refer to questions from the public.
Thank you.
So, to fill the vacancy, input and commentary from the public will be allowed prior to the interested citizens listed below, which I've named, being given the opportunity to answer questions by the counselor. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to comment relative to filling the vacancy? You're a member of the public.
William Atkins, it says up there, that's spelled wrong. I'm at Five Oak Middle Place, if I have to say that. What, my question is, when Mr. Wood resigned his post, is he eligible for reelection with that 12 consecutive year? Or does that break the 12 consecutive year?
I, I respect the question. I don't know the answer to that.
It's a complicated answer. I would say that's probably not an appropriate discussion to have in an open forum at this stage.
It's relevant to the situation at hand. It has, it has to do with why he, why there is a vacancy, and frankly, why I'm, put my name in is because I think District 6 needed representation.
And that's the intent of us to fill it for that purpose?
So I need to know that answer. The public needs to know. District 6, the precinct in 6 needs to know that answer.
As to why he resigned, or...
No, as to whether or not it makes it, well, I'm curious about why, why he resigned. That's one thing. That, that's just a curiosity, but I, my... But I, I, my concern is whether or not it makes him eligible for reelection, whether or not that breaks the 12 consist, the 12 consecutive years, like it says in the charter. We rejected, the, the people of Bridgewater rejected the town charter partially because of the, the elimination of term limits.
That's not before us right now, and I respect the question. That's a total, um, issue for the town clerk, because that's an election issue. It's not an issue for the council. The council sees a vacancy, the charter calls for a process to fill the vacancy. He didn't put his name in for the appointment. So, we have three candidates, you being one of them, to fill the vacancy. If, and if it's an election issue, that's something the town clerk's going to have to handle.
More than an election issue.
But it's a town clerk issue, because it's an election issue.
But it's a town council issue as well.
Ah, I don't know about that.
I think the point is whether Mr. Wood is eligible to run again in April doesn't affect this filling of this vacancy here and now.
Right.
Which is clear. So, for whatever motivation for resigning, this is a vacancy for filling it. And so, what you're talking about is the next step down the road.
Well, it's also a concern too, is if that's the case, if, if he could resume his position.
He'd have to be elected, right? So, if he doesn't get elected, he can't be on the council.
Okay.
Mr. George?
Yeah. So, I appreciate the question. I think I'll speak for myself, hopefully for everyone else. Our, our main concern right now is to make sure that Precinct Six has representation through the next election.
That's my concern too.
I think the other questions that you have are probably questions for the town clerk and things to do with the election and things of that nature, but what I'm considering is just representation until the April election. That, that's my only concern right now. That's my only focus.
Okay. Is there any input or commentary, any other input or commentary from the public regarding the appointment to fill the vacancy of District Six? Seeing none, I'll, I will ask, uh, William Akins to come back up here and, uh, if you want to just give us a little background about yourself and why you want to be a counselor and I'll, then I'll refer to my colleagues for any questions they have.
Okay. I want to first put out there, I really don't want to be a counselor. The reason why I'm.
See?
The reason why I'm willing to be a counselor is because I think District Six needs, Precinct Six, I keep calling it a district. Precinct Six needs representation. And I don't think it's fair that what happened to Precinct Six, just out of the blue, to have somebody resign. That's why I was asking my previous question. So, that's the reason why I'm here. I also ran for councillor-at-large. I didn't want to do that either. I was asked to do that. I was asked to do that because my first day here, I came to the ad hoc marijuana committee because I'm against the, the recreational marijuana shops. And there's a reason for it. And I, I'm a dad. I adopted a little girl, 2015. Someone very close to her recently died of an overdose, Labor Day. And so, that really affects me. And I am dead set to do whatever I can to keep marijuana shops out of, out of Bridgewater. That's the reason why I'm here. I'm here to make Bridgewater and a better place to raise families. Because I think that that's where, if you want Bridgewater to grow, Boston is leaking middle-class families because they can't afford to live there anymore. We are, we have a commuter rail right here. We can take in those middle-class families. And if you want growth in a, in any town, that's what you want to attract. You want to attract middle-class families. Because that's where, that's where growth is. That's where you end up getting places like, uh, Target looks at demographics. If you have a large amount of middle-class families, guess what? A Target's going to want to, want to move in here. You're going to get other revenues. Small businesses will want to be here. If you want to grow the town, that's what you have to do. And that would, that's really why I'm here. I want to make sure that somebody is looking out for Bridgewater. And when somebody bails on Precinct Six, that isn't looking out for Bridgewater anymore.
Any of my colleagues have any questions? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes. Thank you for putting your name in, Mr. Akins. Certainly appreciate it. Um, is it your intention to run for the seat in April?
I'm debating. I pulled the papers, but I, I really don't want to be in politics. I, when I ran for councillor-at-large, I pulled my, after, okay, it's a funny story. I was talking to Mr. Rushton and he said to me, "Why are you painting me as a pro-pot person?" And I'm like, "I'm not doing that. I'm just so anti-pot that everybody seems pro-pot to me." And so, we sat down at a coffee shop and we discussed where he stood on things and where I stood on things. What I said to him is, I said, "Listen, we're on the same page on most everything. Why am I running against you? I would rather run," when I was first talking about it, Mr. Wood was dead set again, he was pro-pot shops, right, right from the beginning. And I felt growing a town by any means necessary is not the right way to do it. And so, I pulled my, my, uh, name from the ballot because I, I'm like, "Why would I run against somebody who is a police officer, who has the same ideas as I, I do, when I can run for my, my own district?" So, yeah, I'm, I'm still debating it. I just, I'd rather just be a dad and stay home. Like, tonight, I'd rather be tucking my daughter into bed and reading her, reading her stories. That's really where I'd rather be. But I'll do this because I love my daughter and I want her to grow up in a place that's worth growing up in.
Thank you.
Any other questions for candidates? Seeing none, thank you. Uh, next up, we have Mr. Mark Lindy.
Good evening, counselors. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. Um, I know you have my letter of intent, but I'm not sure if you have my bio and my information. So, I'm gonna, is it okay that I pass this out?
Yep.
So, um, my name's Mark Lindy. My wife, Terri, is here with me tonight and, um, a fairly new resident of the town of Bridgewater. Um, the first year of my life I spent here on 211 Pleasant Street. And then, my folks were going to Brockton for everything, so they moved to Brockton. And our grandson lives on High Street and, um, I wanted to move here with my wife to be closer to him. We're in Michael's Landing, right on the East Bridgewater line. And I'm a public servant for a long time. I was taught by my parents to get involved in the community, to help people. So, back a long time ago, I was on the Community School Advisory Board, which was the advisory board to the school committee in Brockton. I was the student rep, actually, at Brockton High. I represented my house for three years and I was a student senator. And we actually got to work with the school committee and do legislation. So, I got involved in the Community School Advisory Board, the Cable Advisory Board. And, uh, then in 2008, I sought election to the Southeastern Regional Vocational School Committee. I served three terms on that. I was in my third term. And then, you vacate your position by moving. I did not go to East Bridgewater or West Bridgewater, which is in the district, because I really didn't want to run against either of my two colleagues that I worked closely with. Um, I also was a library trustee in Brockton for 23 years. I was the chair probably seven or eight times, usually sometimes when people didn't want to be the chair because it involved extra work. My first job at 15 was the library. And I loved the library and I worked very hard for the library. Um, I've been involved in community activities, politics, my lodge, the Historical Society, Rotary. I was the past president of the Rotary Club of the Bridgewaters, all three of them. For 18 months, I was supposed to be for 12 months, and my predecessor resigned suddenly and I all of a sudden became the president six months before. Um, but I was ready because I had been the president of the Brockton Rotary Club. And I have a communications media background. I'm a teacher at Massasoit Community College. I teach public speaking. I teach college experience and I teach television production and mass communication, depending on the semester, because I'm a part-time adjunct. Right now, I'm teaching three classes, all daytime classes. When I moved here, I wanted to be an educated citizen. So, I started coming to the council meetings and the school committee meetings. And one of the things I did is I, I, I felt a need when I saw what was going on with the Mitchell School and the dedeclusion, to get involved in that. I grabbed a sign. I held it on the common a couple of times and I met, uh, two of the fine school committee members that are sitting in the back of the room. The town council has an important role in the town and one of those roles, even though it's not the school committee, is to support the schools, to support everything in the town. I love living here. I'm very happy to be here now. I was a lifelong resident of Brockton, but I'm very entrenched already in Bridgewater. I enjoy it. I enjoy, uh, spending time at the library and doing all of the other civic things. I've gone to Brockton Citizen, uh, sorry, Bridgewater Citizens for Civility and Respect, excuse me. And, um, admire what they do. And I have met some of the counselors, talked to some of the counselors. I decided specifically not to contact anybody and lobby for myself prior to, to night, because I believe in a total, open, transparent process. And I would, I really do want to be a counselor. Let me be real clear about that. I want to join you. I want to help. I worked with a team. When I was chair of the school committee, I had a very collaborative approach with my other members. And I went to every event, every activity, the best two days of the year, three days of the year, were the graduation, the nurses' graduation, and then the technical institute, which is the adults that come back to school and, and start a new career. I loved every moment of that and I would love to be involved and help and assist here in the town. The only thing I did not put on there is I am, been on the school building committee for about three months. Glad to answer any questions.
Questions?
Same question I asked Mr. Akins. Thank you for coming, by the way, and thank you for putting your name in. Certainly appreciate it. Uh, is it your intent to run in the April election for this seat?
Yes. And I've taken out papers and I'm working on it. It's a little harder to get them in one district, as I've found out, but, uh, weather's getting a little better and, you know, I can always lose a few pounds, so that's not going to be a bad thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the counselors? Mr. Chase?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Lindy, thank you very much for appearing and, uh, as well, I'll convey my thanks for your interest in that position, uh, for, for District Six. Does your, does your present employment, uh, do you believe that suggests to you any difficulty that you might experience in terms of council meetings or perhaps committee work or other?
Absolutely not. I look forward to the committee work. That's where a lot of the work gets done ahead of time and presented. I, I, I want to find a way. I think another counselor is the representative to the school building committee, but even if I'm not on it physically, I will still go to that because my grandson was affected by that roof collapse. And he'll never get to see the new school, but I always think it's every generation's responsibility to pay for the next generation to go to school. Someone did it for me when I went to new schools back in the day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Jason Santoro?
Good evening, council members. My name is Jason Santoro. Much, much like Mr. Lindy, I am a Brockton transplant, um, as of September. I've always kept my eye on politics. Um, local politics is kind of, gets swept under the rug. It doesn't pop up on CNN and Fox News and what have you. Uh, so, you really got to do your homework to keep up with the.
It's a good thing.
It is a good thing. Unless you're cutting edge, you know, you could really be progressive. Um, and I am pursuing my master's degree in public administration through Villanova. Uh, right now, I am the director of the Brockton Revocation Program, which is a Department of Youth Service residential, uh, treatment program. Uh, I've been involved with the Y for pretty much my adult life and also, uh, as a child, swim lessons, basketball, uh, camps. I serve on the safety committee for the Old Colony YMCA in Brockton. Uh, it lasts, this past summer, I was named to the, uh, gun violence in Brockton. The Y did receive a $850,000 grant and they did put together a committee and I was lucky to be named on that committee. And this is just the right time for me to now get involved. Um, you know, Villanova's motto is to ignite change. I want to take, you know, what I am learning and put it into practice. Um, and I just, even, I just, the passionate, uh, Mr. William?
Akins.
Akins. Mr. Akins. Uh, he's very passionate about, you know, preserving the moral, moral fiber of Bridgewater. Um, you know, the concerned citizen about the speeder. These aren't little things. This is what makes the government go and we need to represent, um, the residents of Bridgewater to, to grow. And it's all about balances and making tough decisions. Um, I make tough decisions every single day and I have to stand by them for better or worse.
Any questions from the counselors? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Same question I asked your other, uh, two colleagues that came up here. First of all, again, thank you for coming up and volunteering to do it. It's, uh, it's great that we've got three folks here. Is it your intention to run for the position in April of this year?
Absolutely. I will look into it and I will weigh the options, but as of right now, yes, I would like to run in April.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the counselors? Anybody else? Mr. Chief, Mr. Chase?
If I may, thank you. Mr. President, um, I'll ask my question, which is, uh, do you anticipate that your current employment would impose any, uh, undue burden on your availability to serve on the council?
No. I am on call 24/7, but there is checks and balances to allow, um, myself, if I have a scheduled event, to be removed from that on-call status.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
So, on that note, um, I will entertain a motion to appoint.
So moved.
To appoint.
Well, you have to be specific.
I have to be.
Make a motion to appoint.
Okay. Um, I'll make a motion to appoint Mark Lindy.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
There's a second. There's a motion to appoint Mr. Mark Lindy and there's a second by Counselor Chase. Any discussion? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I heard, uh, Mr. Akins say that he was unsure whether he was going to run for the seat, but I heard Mr. Lindy and Mr. Santoro say they both wanted to. So, I'm concerned of creating in the public's mind a bias that the town council preferred one person over the other. So, I'm not going to vote to appoint anybody tonight, so I'm going to be no on any recommendation. I think it's all great that we have them here. When Mr. Chase came in, he was the only person, uh, who was running for the seat at the time. Made it pretty easy. Uh, prior to that, when Mr. Rivers, uh, left, there were several people who, um, indicated that they would be running and I voted no on those two. So, I'm going to do that again.
Any other discussion? Mr. Columbotus?
Um, I will be voting to support somebody, anybody. I think, um, I regretted the way we handled the, the filling Mr. Rivers vacancy to, um, we're constantly asking for people to get involved and, you know, volunteer their, their time and efforts to, um, town government and yet, we had people do that and we rejected them as, you know, somehow they weren't good enough to be part of our club. And I thought that sent a bad message. So, I'm intent on appointing somebody tonight and I, I do support Mr. Lindy as, he seems So I'm intent on appointing somebody tonight, and I do support Mr. Lindy, as he seems like the best candidate for the job. So I'll be voting yes on this question.
Anybody else? Any other discussion?
And I, too, would like to say it's one of those things where we have, you know, a tough decision to make. And I do remember that night when Bill Rivers had resigned, and we had three gentlemen that came in, and I made, I made the motion for, all three of them, but I never got a second because the intention that night was not to fill the vacancy. I wasn't here for the first, first one, I think when Councilor Chrissy Cologne resigned, but I was here when Dr. Perry resigned and we filled it with Fred Chase. And Councilor Wood brought up some of the same concerns that, some of the same concerns that Council Fitzgibbons did. However, there was just you at the time, and Bill was a little concerned about the number of meetings between the elections, didn't think it was necessary. My position all along is I want to follow the charter. That's our role, that's our, that's our goal. And I look at the charter and the order that was put forth by Council Fitzgibbons and the summary by our town attorney. And I think that we have a duty to fill it, have a duty to the people of District Six. And we'll have a spirited election if that's where it goes. There's nothing wrong with that. You know, it's unusual, we can even get people to put their name on the ballot, and here we have three people wanting to get the appointment, which could be just for three or four meetings. So I hope that's a sign of things to come, but I'm comfortable with the motion that we have in front of us, and I'm looking, I'm looking forward to making, having an appointment. So any other discussion? This does require a roll call vote.
And the motion, again, the motion is to appoint Mark Lindy to fill the vacancy.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
No.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Five in favor, two against.
Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
I'll second that.
There's a motion to reconsider, and there's a second discussion. Mr. Columbodis?
I think, I think we should make it unanimous at this point, so I'm ready to vote yes on reconsidering and voting yes on the nomination.
Okay. So there's a motion to reconsider, and there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no? And now what?
Well, I guess, I'll move the question, then.
Okay.
You have to make a motion to...
So there's a motion to appoint Mark Lindy vacant, to the vacant seat on the town council. Is there a second?
Yes.
There's a second. And we'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
No.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Six in favor, one against.
Still not unanimous, Tim. Want to do it again?
I know. What you wanted me to do, I wasn't going to drink your Kool-Aid, but I don't know what you were expecting me to happen. It's still...
Thought it would be a nice gesture to our new colleague.
Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for the three of you, and you won't be able to sit up here tonight. Mark Lindy, you got to get appointed, and you have a three-week break, okay? All right, moving on. We do not have any hearings, we don't have any licensed transactions, presentations from the Conservation Commission, Marilyn McDonald, I refer to the town manager.
Mr. President, Marilyn McDonald is chairman of our Conservation Commission, and she was kind enough to come here tonight just to give you a little bit of an update on what the commission does and what they've got in front of them, and probably a pitch for additional members, if I'm going to put words in your mouth. So I'll let Marilyn go from there.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, councilors. As stated, my name is Marilyn McDonald, chair of Bridgewater Conservation Commission. I've been on since 2014. We currently have three members, myself, vice-chair Harry Bailey, who's also on the Taunton River, and member Eileen Frisco, which means if three of us aren't there, there's no quorum. So yes, we are actively looking for members. I believe we have a gentleman coming in. This meeting has been changed to Tuesday, the 18th, so I haven't seen the agenda. I'm hoping we don't scare him away, but if you know anybody that's interested in conservation, please send them our way. The good news is, three members we do have, we are passionate about making, you know, the meetings work. If we, one of us can't be there, which happens, we do make additional meetings, impose those as we're doing this week. So we really try to stay on target of, you know, inappropriately postponing anybody's filings. Again, that being said, we are, again, looking for members, and if you have anybody, please send our way. I can give you a little bit, I don't really know what's upcoming, I haven't seen anything recently, but I can give you a little update as to what the conservation does, if you would like, if you have questions.
Yeah, I think it'd be useful to, for people to know what the commitment is, how often you meet, a month, how long each meeting is, and whatever work is involved.
We meet twice a month, and those are now scheduled for the second Thursday and the fourth Thursday, I'm sorry, second Thursday and fourth Thursday. We've been changing things around. So there are some commitments as far as sidewalks, but that's, to me, is the fun part, getting outside and doing those. And, you know, that's really the commitment. So if we don't have an additional member, that's where we're getting now, rerouting things and trying to keep at least one meeting a month going so that we're not, again, inappropriately keeping filings, not being heard. So there is a little commitment, I'm not going to lie, you know. We've moved the meetings to 6:30 versus 7:00 because by then, some of us can't talk. We were so tired from work. So that seemed to help.
You're doing well tonight, though. You're doing well tonight, Doc.
Thanks. I'm usually on that side, so the podium's got me wound up.
Hey, Marilyn, is there any, like, individuals' experience that could help them, or is it just someone who is very interested in the town?
That's a good question. Yeah, I was learn-as-you-go. I had great mentors, you know, loss of our chair, Dick Montez, who passed, but, you know, great mentors, and you learn as you go. I know a lot more now than in the past years than I did when I first became a member. So no, you don't have to have experience, learn as you go, and great if you do have experience, you know. Some people do come in with experience, which is, which is always helpful.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other further questions?
Any questions, other questions from the councilors? Appreciate you coming in and giving us an update.
All right, thanks. Have a good evening, councilors.
Thank you.
Move on to town managers' report. A few things under there tonight.
All right. So starting with the Mitchell School, which is a standing item, I think I addressed some of the schedule last meeting, but I will update it, actually, I don't need to update it, but I'll repeat it just so folks know. The design development process, which is what we're in right now, goes through March of this year, at which point we'll have, start on 60% design construction drawings, rather, and that should be done by June. We have a submission to make to the MSBA coming up in March, but also, again, in June. After their review, then the architects work on 90% construction documents through the, towards the end of August, and make another submission to the MSBA at the end of August. And by October, we should see 100% construction documents in place and prepared for a bidding process, which is, will start in November of 2020, so this coming November. We anticipate awarding the construction in December, and if all goes well, and I expect not, I expect it will, I always expect it will, but the school should be completed by July of 2022, ready for September occupancy in September of 2022, which seems like a long way away, but, but it really isn't. Project continues to be on budget. We won't have significant issues with the budget until we really see cost estimates, and then when we see actual bids, we'll be able to set that budget more precisely. But as you know, we're anticipating right now an $80,600,000 project. Commonwealth contributes almost $34 million to that. Our reimbursement rate is 55, our stated reimbursement established by the MSBA based on a number of factors is 55.63, but as with all of these school projects statewide, that is not the true reimbursement rate. Our true reimbursement rate is about almost 42%, just because of some of the ineligible costs. And when I say ineligible costs, that does not mean that we're, we're doing something extravagant that we otherwise shouldn't be doing. It's just there's arbitrary caps on the square footage reimbursement, and site work is not a reimbursable expense for any of the school projects. So just, just very generally, that, that's how that process is established.
Mr. Dutton, if I could just interrupt on that. So that would be kind of like the state saying that their reimbursement for regional transportation's 100%, and then saying you have ineligible expenses and we're only giving you 75%. Something like that.
Probably something like that.
Thank you.
Promises, promises.
We're not, we're not like sending kids all over to creation in our buses. We're just dealing with what the state rules are.
Exactly. Exactly. And for better or worse, we play by the state rules because we do get almost $34 million to offset the cost to local taxpayers. Last, last meeting, we had the pleasure of doing a fly-through, which is sort of a digital tour of the inside of the building, which was quite honestly fascinating. It really gave you an idea of the interior spaces and, and how it would be laid out, how the light really affects the educational spaces. So it, it was, it was pretty impressive, I thought. Last meeting also did a review of the tentative outdoor spaces and play areas. So that was last meeting. We did, finance director, Mr. Salanti and I met with the district to get an update. We've been looking at different financing options, obviously. For those that don't know, the district will, will bond this project, but, but they've been very, very helpful and very willing to get our input on, on what the best financing options might be. We might, we may, and it's just a may at this point, we may be looking at historically low interest rates right now and do a significant bonding now rather than wait until the end of 2022 when, when nobody really knows what the, the interest rates will be. So, so smarter minds than, than I are looking at that. Also have had some discussions with the district about other capital needs apart from the school, because, believe it or not, there are needs across the district, certainly in Bridgewater, but obviously, by far the largest is the new school. Just a reminder for folks, the building, Mitchell School Building Committee meets, generally meets on the second and fourth Mondays of the month, right here in the council chambers. The next one is scheduled for February 27th, and the architects will be presenting some updated cost estimates and also prepping for the next submission for the MSBA, which is March 2nd. And, and as they usually do, provide additional, more refined plans. But all of the information, all the materials that the school building authority, sorry, the Mitchell School Building Committee sees are posted on bridwaterschoolproject.com. So that is the source of, of all the materials that, that the school building committee has been reviewing from, from day one. So again, that's bridwaterschoolproject.com. So that is what I have on the Mitchell School. Unless anybody has any questions, I will move right on to Skip's Liquors. Skip's Liquors, happy to report we're all set. There are no issues related to the liquor licenses. Safety inspections have all been done, and so we are, in terms of liquor licensing, all set with that finally. And we will be changing our renewal process for everyone, for all licenses next year. So at the end of next year, it should be, should be a much more seamless process, and so hopefully, skips won't be an issue in front of this council again.
Mr. Dutton, when you say next year, do you mean the end of 2020 or the end of 2021?
The end of 2020. So licensing, licensing goes calendar year.
Yeah, so this year, not next.
Yes, yes, this year. Did I say next year?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Living in the past. So if anybody has any questions on that, happy to move on to a brief report on paid parking. So we did a little bit of an analysis, and I'll walk you through this. So combined, combined data, which gives you all three areas that we currently identify as paid parking areas, School Street, Central Square Lot, and Spring Street Lot. You can see the counts and the, the net revenues right here. So just to pick an example, School Street generated $41,208, and my apologies, this is dated by one month, so we have a little bit more, but, but for our purposes, this is, this is good. And we had 12,548 independent visits. On the, so obviously, that's, that's our primary revenue generation area. The Central Square Lot generated $11,597 with 5,229 independent visits. And the Spring Street Lot, which was the least, least busy, generated $2,559 with 1,292 independent visits. So you can see the average length of stay and the average amount paid per, per vehicle, and you can see the rate here. It's a 50 cent per hour rate at Spring Street Lot, 75 cents an hour in the Central Square, and then a dollar on School Street. So just to show you the, so there are two different ways that you can pay. One is through the Passport app, similar to Brockton, if anybody's paid parking Brockton, city of Brockton. And the other is you can pay right at the meter. So this breaks down how many of those totals were done through the app and how many were done at the meter. So it's interesting that the vast majority of people are using the Passport app rather than, than getting out of the car and inputting their credit card into the meter. So that's, that's actually a pleasant surprise for us, but, but it is a surprise nonetheless. So we've...
Is there a difference in fees between what we pay or what we're charged for passport data versus meter data?
No, no. Either through the meter or through Passport, we pay the same amount. So that's, that's sort of a breakdown of the, of the metered areas, and I'll show you. We calculated the parking ticket revenue. Now, this is unrelated to the paid parking. This is the total, town-wide total parking ticket revenue, and we're trying to break it down by location. So parking tickets relative to School Street, parking tickets relative to the Town Square Lot, Central Square Lot, and then parking tickets related to the Spring Street Lot. So as an example, if you parked on School Street and you didn't either engage the app and you didn't pay at the meter, at the kiosk there, then you would get a written ticket by the Bridgewater Police Department. So these are total ticket, parking ticket revenues, FY '18 through '19, and we cut it down year-to-date just to give you a comparison. So year-to-date, which is, would be July 1st through December 31st in this case, we had in FY '18, $11,466 in revenue. In FY '19, we had $11,441 in revenue. And then 2020 has seen a little bit of a jump, significant jump, $15,201. Annualized, our total, our total revenue from parking tickets in 2018 was $34,383. Then in FY '19, it was $38,399. We are projecting a conservative estimate of $40,000 for, for the balance of FY 2020, which is June 30th of this year. So...
Mr. Dutton, does that include revenue relative to the parking ban that's in effect from November to April?
It includes, excuse me, all of parking ticket revenue.
Okay, thank you.
What we're trying to do, and I can tell you that it's a little bit more difficult because Bridgewater is still on a written, you know, handwritten parking ticket system. So we actually have to go through and hand, hand-count the number of tickets issued on School Street, Spring Street, Central Square in order to break it, excuse me, break it down. The, one of the capital items that we have in our capital plan is, is intended to get us off of the old-fashioned handwritten ticket and onto a more usable electronic ticketing system. But this is, this is what, what we have for now until we can handcompile the actual tickets that, that have been written. I would, I would caution on some of the, the parking ticket revenues. While the numbers seem to be going up and look good, as the finance department pointed out... out to me, there are so many variables when it comes to parking tickets that it's hard to make, you know, sort of shape official policy around, around the limited numbers that we have here. And it's much easier to shape policy or to make determinations on, on parking rates, specifically on School Street, based upon, based upon, you know, more narrow data, more narrow data sets. So once we, once we have the numbers for School Street specifically, in terms of parking tickets, we'll be able to make determinations about whether or not it makes sense to, to raise the parking rates on School Street, as an example.
Mr. George, you have a question?
Yes, through you to the town manager. So, Mr. Dutton, I'm looking at the average length of stay. That was my understanding that you could only go up to two hours on a meter? Or am I just thinking, so there's no limitation to the amount of time that you can, you can park at a meter as long as you pay for it?
Correct, right now.
So I would, I would make the comment, at least in Central Square, that not only do we want to realize revenue, but I think we also want cars to turn over. It seems to me that roughly almost three hours of the average length of stay in the center is most likely not shopping in the shops downtown. I would really, I would really like to reconsider putting in time limits on those so that the spots do, you know, turn over.
And I, I think that's an excellent point, and making, trying to make some decisions like that really drives home the point about, you know, getting better data out of it because while Spring Street, you know, is, is not well-used, if we make policy changes to make Spring Street, you know, available for all-day parking from eight to three-
Right.
-that may, that may drive more parking to that area and give you better turnover in the central-
Yeah, I mean, my sensitivity is school and, and central, obviously, for their proximity to downtown. If we can drive more people to Spring Street, I think that alleviates a lot of the cars there for a long time. Hopefully, it also alleviates some of the downtown congestion as well.
No.
I think that's a wish, though.
Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dutton, just with respect to the paid parking revenue figures, and I believe you noted that they were about a month out of date, and I'm just wondering, what is the actual reporting period that these figures reflect?
This right here reflects implementation of the, of the parking program through last month.
Through year-end, shall we say? Is that about right?
Through year-end, right.
Okay.
Year-end 2019.
And would you guess that those, the realized figures are actually roughly in accord with projections that we had talked about?
I think, I think quite honestly, our initial ramp-up was very slow and did not come close to meeting what our expectations were. I think the more recent data after specifically fall of this year through the end of the year, at least on a, on that time segment, have outpaced some of our expectations. So I would caution that, you know, implementation of a, of a paid parking system is a long-term, you know, is really a long-term project, and so it really takes a fair amount of time for us to really see where the trend is going to be. School Street is obviously far outpacing, you know, what we thought, but, but I think I'd given the, the council, you know, a figure of $125,000 a year, and I think that's where we will get if we continue the program, but we've got a ways to go. And we, we have not, we have not advertised, BSU has helped us advertise, but we as a town have not particularly advertised the paid parking system or program. Thank you.
On the paid, not the paid parking, the parking ticket revenue, that's actual money received?
Correct.
What has not been received? Like what's, what's written versus received?
Um-
I mean, so this is actually received.
That is actually received.
Assuming we wrote, they wrote more tickets than that, though.
Right. Right. That's, that's a good point. So they, they would have written more tickets. We do have, on occasion, we'll have people, on a rare occasion, we'll boot, boot people that have got a sizable number of, of parking tickets.
And that revenue is in a revolving, the parking, the parking ticket revenue was in a revolving account that's really reserved for the police department, am I correct?
Correct. At this point, that, that those funds are used for, usually for repairs and maintenance on vehicles.
On the paid parking, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm still not convinced it's a good program, and I'd like to see the expenses, but we, we did project first year about 150, and I don't know what the, what it's costing us. School Street, obviously, you know, it kind of, when your hands are tied, you got to park somewhere, right? But-
It's, I think, I think the bottom line, we've, we've seen that, that a paid parking system can work, especially in response to, or as a complement to the BSU's parking program. But I do, I do believe that, you know, we want to make sure that we're not perceived as, as chasing business out of town.
Well, that's the thing, is, is Central Square is really one of my concerns because you do have two, two businesses that, one's about to go across the street and one is closed. You know, I don't know how, I'm not saying this is a direct correlation, but there's certainly two less businesses there for people to go behind there and use the paid parking. So.
So we, you know, the finance department keeps careful track and works very closely with the police department just to track, you know, what kind of usages, and as, as we do with Laz, is what kind of usage are we getting and where it's trending. So once, once we have, you know, a little bit more time under our belts, we'll be able to really, you know, map out a better trend. But at this point, I just don't think we have enough data to mark, mark a trend. So we will, I'm happy to keep coming back on a periodic basis and give you an update because I do, as I say, I do have some sensitivity to the, any notion that it's not, you know, that it's not good for the businesses, and I think Council George has a good point about making sure that we, if, if there are areas that would benefit from time-limited parking, that we look at that and institute that. I agree with that. All right.
Any expenses? Like what have we spent?
Yes, we have spent 29, a little over 29,000 to date, which includes capital costs and setup, so that's wrapped into that figure. So that, that figure, over time, will drop as a percentage of total-
But that includes the fee for the company, right?
Right, oh, absolutely, absolutely. That's all, that's total, all-in.
So what is your intention then with the, with the profit, if you will? I mean, to make some of these improvements?
So the, the profit, so to speak, is set aside in a separate fund as it's required to be by ordinance and by state law, and with that money, we can offset expenses related to sidewalk improvements, you know, some of our complete street design work, some of our road rebuilding expenses. We can, we can allocate that to offset some of those expenses. So for instance, right now, we have an RFP out to do road engineering on about six of different roads. We're asking engineers to give us a price on what it's going to cost to engineer, you know, Deerfield Area, Cross Street, Vernon Street, Flag Street, South Street, and Main Street. So we've got, we've got those six in the works, and as I've explained, some of those are more urgent than others. So I would fully expect being able to use some of this money to be able to cover the engineering expenses on, on those, some of those roads, at least. So that is, that's where we are with that. And the other thing on the list was the stop sign in Central Square, and I'm happy to report that we have installed sort of our beta test, and it seems to work. I mean, the lights seem to work. I don't know if it's actually stopping any traffic, but the lights do work, and that went up, actually went up a couple of days ago, I guess yesterday, would have been yesterday. So we didn't plan it that way, but that's just when we got the, I think the equipment came in last week, and so that's when Highway Superintendent arranged to have it set up. So if that works and seems to be effective, then we can do the same thing over on the Bedford side. See where we can go with that.
Any other questions regarding stop signs? Just remember, if you have any items you want on our next meeting, which is three weeks away, to let the town manager know tonight, or you can let Ian know anytime between now and before the agenda is put out for our next meeting.
I just thought, I'd like to ask for an update with respect to the, the town website. I know that we haven't really discussed it in quite a while, but I'd just like to know that that is still on track, you know, particularly as to the, the capability, the, the module for 311 season access. I think that that's something I'd like to see implemented, and I'd just like to know that we're continuing to pursue that.
Town website update? Okay. Sisouza?
I have something on the senior center, but I think I'll write it up and give it to off-line.
Okay, moving on to discussion items. We have, A, town manager goals. Refer to Councilor Loesch.
Yes, so the strategic planning committee has been outlining our process, I think, since December for the review process and the goals. We are, this is last call for any counselors who needed to provide any additional inputs. The town manager sent over his strategic goals today that we'll review at our next meeting. We'll also, we have also already viewed the goals that were met and weren't met from 2019 to be re-included on the order that you'll see shortly, that will get referred to us so we can populate it with all of your inputs. So I'll stop and see if anyone had anything, and if you don't, then we'll continue moving forward.
If not, you can reach out to Councilor Loesch and let her know any specific goals you want. Moving on to committee reports, are there any committees that wish to make any reports tonight? Mr. Souza?
I'm still waiting for the Community Economic Development Committee to bring that item back. Last month, they said they had it, the last meeting. We have it, but we held it, the right to farm ordinance. Still waiting for a final answer from that committee back here to the council. And there's a number of other people waiting as well.
Do you have a comment on that?
Anybody else?
Committee's all, all well.
Gaming committee is diligently-
Waiting.
-waiting for something to happen.
Something to happen.
Okay, legislation for action, resolution FY 20005, FY 21 budget resolution. At their meeting held December 19th, 2019, the Budget and Finance Committee voted to recommend as, as amended. The Finance Committee voted 12120 to recommend approval as amended by the Finance Director. The Budget and Finance Committee met earlier this evening to vote to consider and will provide their disposition to the full council. This measure may be finally considered pending the disposition of the Budget and Finance Committee and adoption of any proposed amendment. The Budget and Finance Committee did vote 2 to 0, 2 to 0 tonight to approve the budget resolution with the amendments. So I will entertain a motion to approve the amendments.
Motion, well, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution first.
There's a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I'll make a motion to amend as indicated in the resolution.
There's a motion to approve as amended, approve the amendments in the resolution.
Second.
There's a second, any discussion on that? All those in favor of the amendments?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Now we're voting under the, the main resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So the budget resolution has been passed for 2020, 2021, fiscal '21.
Can I make a, just a comment? One thing that I was very happy to see is the reduction in the unreserved balance generating free cash. We went from 175 to 125. I hope in the future, with subsequent resolutions, we can bring that number down significantly so that we can start realizing more recurring revenue for operational expenses. So, thank you.
There is no old, there is no old business under the agenda. New business, ordinance FY 20005, general ordinance, commercial parking licensing, proposed by Councilor George. I'll recommend a motion to refer to the Rules and Procedures Committee.
So moved.
There's a motion and there's a second to refer to the Rules and Procedures Committee.
Can I just, can I make a, so-
Discussion, go ahead, Mr. George.
Yep. So what I, my entire intent of this ordinance is not to generate any type of revenue for the town, but for us to be able to control, or have some control over organizations and people that are going to use their property for paid parking, usually for events. The biggest thing is, is commencement at BSU. And just to lay down the groundwork on why I'm doing this, and I may have brought this up before, but at the last commencement, I was actually coming up Plymouth Street, going towards the center of town, and turning the corner, turned the corner by the old gas station that was being used for parking. There was actually cars in the street. And to be brutally honest, Mr. Ivaldi was here, if I was speeding and I didn't know the lay of the land, I really could have caused some, some big problems. I reached out to the town manager, and basically, we do not have any type of ordinance to basically control paid parking. So the intent of this is for a very nominal fee to give our public safety officials the ability not only to assess a site and actually dictate parking, safety measures, things that are going to keep the public safe, but also if it's not being followed, that public safety has the ability to take appropriate action. And I just don't want this to come across as we're just trying to, you know, take money out of people's pockets. I mean, that's not the intent at all, but I don't think I'd be doing my job if I saw an issue, potentially trying to avoid a serious issue and not try to put something in play that can help address that issue. So, thank you.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Not to be thought about tonight, but just for some, something for the Rules and Procedures Committee to think on and for the town attorney to think on. This establishes, establishes a licensing procedure, and it gives the town manager that authority to license, are we the licensing board, not to come, a lot of those applications to come through us with a recommendation by the town manager. So just something when I was reading it through, I thought we should address.
Okay, there's the motion, okay.
And just for clarification, would we be able to follow the same procedure that we've done, giving the town manager the ability to issue one-day liquor licenses? I'm, I-
Yeah, no, that's, that's why, that, that was just kind of a pop ahead to me.
I want to make this as streamlined and easy as possible. That, I would be all for that.
On board with that.
Okay, there's motion and there's a second to refer to the Rules and Procedures Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ordinance FY 20008, rescind ordinance D 2012-004, administration and judiciary oversight of budget, specifically the ambulance receipts. That's put forth by Councilor Fitzgibbons.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
Second.
There's motion and there's a second to refer to committee. Any other, any discussion, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I, I think we've talked about it a couple of times. We mentioned it tonight even, that, you know, this was, this came in at a different time and place than where we are as a town, and I think it just gives us more flexibility to do what we need to do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next is order FY 20045, establish town manager goals. Councilor Loesch, this needs to be referred to the Strategic Planning Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's motion and a second to refer to the Strategic Planning Committee. Did you want to comment, Ms. Loesch?
We discussed it. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Order FY 20046, road and drainage betterments, First Street. There's a note to refer this to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
There's motion and a, and a second to refer, any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, that passes. Citizens comments. Are there any citizens here that wish to speak during the citizens' comments portion of the meeting?
Hello, Mark Lindy, 56 Michael Road. I just wanted to thank the council for your confidence in me and looking forward to working with all of you. I'm excited. Thank you very much.
Three weeks.
Three weeks. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes.
I'm curious on how I go about making sure, like I said, I'm concerned about that, that whole resignation and 12 consecutive years thing. What's, what's the procedure? Because I, I don't have the money to challenge you guys, so, in court, and I don't, you know, I don't think I should. I want to know what the legal precedent is, and I'm trying to stick up for our town. So, what's the next step for me if I want to make sure that we do this right? Because I think it goes again, personally, I think it doesn't cause the 12 consecutive years. It may not even be an issue, but I just don't like the idea that it might. I want to know the legal ramifications of it.
I don't have any answers.
Maybe the council?
I, I don't give opinions other than to my client, which is the town.
Can you ask the council, then?
The comments portion of the meetings are really important.
Okay, so you don't want me to talk about that either. I'm just trying to get information as a comment on what is my next step to make sure that this is done right. I don't like this, obviously. I'm sure lots, I, I did a poll on, on the Facebook page for Bridgewater residents, and they also said that they don't like it either. And what's to prevent anybody else from doing the same thing? So, where do I go? What do I do? Am I just going to be stonewalled?
Can I just make a suggestion? My recommendation would be to email to Council President your concerns. He can work with the Town Attorney. We'd be able to provide you a response at the time, but this is not a time for us to go back and forth usually with town. It's for comment, not for discussion.
It is a comment. I'm making a comment.
Right, so if your comment is, then we heard your question, and we will definitely be able to address it via the Council President to you directly.
Are there any other citizens here that wish to speak during the citizens' comments portion of our meeting? Seeing none, I'll move on to council comments. I'll begin with Councilor Fitzgibbons.
I thank you to all three gentlemen who came out tonight to be appointed to the council. Welcome, Mr. Lindy. Glad to have you on board. And we haven't had, been hit by winter yet, so let's knock on wood and hope it doesn't really hit us.
Why did you do that? Why did you do that?
Thank you.
I too would like to express my appreciation to the three people who came out and volunteered and sought to be appointed to the vacancy on District Six. So, while citizen, citizen comments are not a time for discussion or back-to-back, you know, back-and-forth discussion, I guess as under this time, I'd like to express my understanding of how the process works. It will be the Board of Registars who will determine whether their candidate is a viable candidate for the election. So, I direct you to go to them to seek some information. That's about it. Thank you.
I want to thank all the volunteers, especially the ones for the library, in addition to the folks that came out. I hope you do still run in April and get elected, and if you don't choose the council, there's a plethora of other volunteer opportunities to get involved in town. There's only nine seats here, but there's probably 39 seats in other committees where it also make an impact. So, I encourage folks to do that and be a productive part of the town.
Thank you. I echo Councilor Loesch. A couple of other things. I want to congratulate the Bridgewater Rainham Swim Team. Both girls and boys won their conference championship on Saturday. Sectionals will be next Saturday, and as it stands right now, there's going to be four individual and three relays competing for the Division One State Championship. So, I have a daughter on it, full disclosure, but I take that opportunity to do that as well. That's about it.
Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would just like to thank everyone who's come tonight to step forward to express interest in the position for Precinct Six council seat. And again, congratulations to Mr. Lindy. I think that, of course, with the elections still before us, those of you who have taken papers or who might yet take papers to be a candidate for that position, you should certainly proceed to do so. It's something that is really the only way that all of the voters of District Six can, you know, fully assess everyone's capability and, and pick the best candidate. But, for all of you who nonetheless have stepped forward tonight, I think it's really admirable, and I, I thank you very much for having done so.
Mr. Souza?
Yeah, I wish, thanked them for coming out. New member in the library. We always use people in those committees. And again, just like others have said, you know, in a couple of months, you're going to have the election. You're going to get out and knock on a lot of doors to get those signatures. And if two of you run or three of you run for the position, it's going to be the first time in a while that we've seen a council seat being challenged by more than one person running. Thank you.
Just, just quickly, I want to just talk a little bit about the, a few of us went to the Mass Municipal Conference a week and a half ago up in Boston, and the big take that I got out of that was when the Governor spoke to us on Saturday morning that local aid will increase about 2.7 percent, and he is certainly committed to funding the $1.5 billion in education over, I think it's a seven-year period, to plug that additional funds into education. So, it was promising of his commitment and the Lieutenant Governor's commitment to, to the, the work that we all do here at the local level and the needs that we have at the local level, and they are very much aware of that, understanding that, you know, the economy can drive some of those revenues, obviously, and that, you know, the 2.7 percent for fiscal '21 in unrestricted local aid is a good sign in other areas that they're, they're focusing on the budget. I also want to thank the three gentlemen that put their name forward, and we interviewed tonight, and congratulations to Mark Lindy, who will begin his service as a councilman in three, three weeks, unless you get sworn in before then and we have an emergency meeting and all that, but don't worry about that. We do have an executive session this evening, so I will entertain a motion to move into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body, and to adjourn from executive session. That does require a roll call vote. There's a motion.
Second.
And there's a second.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
We are going into executive session, so you have to clear the room.